Well, it's six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. Today is January 16th, 2016, 2018, and this evening's work session will be regarding the gambling tax rates for the La Center card rooms. And this evening, our financial consultant, Paul Lewis, will be doing a presentation. We'll be able to watch it on the screen. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. As the mayor mentioned, this is a workshop on the 2018 gambling tax proposal. We've got about fifteen-- We've got about fifteen slides, five topics to cover. The bulk of it will be on the middle section, the proposed changes to the gambling tax. Also gonna touch on before that, local card room industry changes. Some of this is an update, refresher on some information that was presented to you last fall. And really is a follow-up to the same issue that you've been addressing over the last year or more. We'll get to that in a second. As a workshop, this is an opportunity for you to discuss amongst yourselves and to give feedback to staff about the proposal that we'll be reviewing. It's not an opportunity for the public to comment. Typically, in workshop sessions, there is no public comment. We're working towards a proposal that will have action for you to take on the 24th, so a week from tomorrow at your meeting. At that point, there will be a public hearing and there will be opportunity for public comment and give you feedback on any final proposal that comes before you. But again, this is really an opportunity for us to present to you a draft and to get your feedback and let you discuss amongst yourselves your feelings on the proposal. Okay? So first, I wanted to, before we get into the bulk of it, I wanted to set a little bit of the context, and I mentioned this just a minute ago. The Alani Casino has been under construction for a number of years, and the mayor during the 2017 budget process brought up the issue of the potential reduction in the card room gambling taxes in 2017 after the opening. Never brought anything forward for action to the council at that point, but really started some discussion about the potential need to address the change in the competitive environment that the card rooms would be facing with the opening of the casino. Last fall, the card rooms actually came forward with a request, and it was a twofold request. The first part was asking for a rate reduction for a brief interim period last fall. The second part of that was to ask for an opening for a discussion about taking a look at the existing tax structure and changing that up on a permanent basis or a more permanent basis. So it was a two-pronged request. The mayor brought forward a request for the interim reduction, the 10% to a 5%, changing the tax rate from 10% to 5% for the last three months of 2017 in October, and it failed for lack of a second at a council meeting. So we picked up on the second part of their request involving a request for an exploration of an alternative tax structure. The mayor and I have had a number of conversations with the card room owners about that topic, and what you will see today is sort of the result of that discussion and where we are. Okay? First up, just wanted to do a quick snapshot to set the context for the revenue that the card room gambling tax brings into the city of La Center. The blue bar in the left-hand axis represents the tax revenue to the city, and the red line in the right-hand axis represents the percentage of the total-- oh, total revenue, general fund revenue that the city received in each of those years. And you can see, 2008, actually somewhat of an anomaly, there was a large interest payment that was credited to the general fund that year of about $500,000. Otherwise, that red dot would be up closer to where the others are in the 74%, 75% range, which you can see that the peak in terms of percentage was in 2012 at 79% of your revenue. The peak in terms of revenue was roughly 2011 and 2016. 2011 was 3.2, 2016 was 3.1 million. And this is in the context of a general fund expenditure of in the $4 million range, so it'll give you a sense of the dominance that that revenue source has in terms of your operations. And you can see in 2017, actually, one of the card rooms closed in 2014, CHIPS, and the New Phoenix closed the second quarter of 2017. You can see that 2017 revenue came in actually ahead of plan. I'll get some more information on that in a minute. But it's just under $2.5 million, $2.4 million at 62% of your revenue base, and the 2018 budget estimated revenue at $1,572, which is roughly 51% of the revenues. Okay? So it gives you a little bit of context for that. And the little note at the bottom, that roughly $2.4 million of revenue in 2017 exceeded the budget estimate of 1.9 by about $465,000. Okay? This is, council member Zalenzuela mentions this, I think, several times during the budget process, but this is very unique, where a city of any size has this sort of revenue source from one industry, let alone two businesses in its jurisdiction, and definitely unique when you look at the card room and gambling tax type of revenue source.
Okay. Paul, I have a question for you. The 1.5 or 1.6 million estimate for the 2018 budget, how did we arrive at that number? What data were we looking at?
So we looked back at the time, I think we had five months' worth of operations after the casino had opened. So I don't have the monthly graph here in this presentation, but 26, well, I actually do. So this is the monthly graph. So we looked at the May to September, I think, was the timeframe that we had. So the blue bars here are the 2017 revenues. So we looked at the May to September information that we had, and we updated it with October when October came in. And I think we may have even had November. I don't think, I'm not sure if we did or not. But we took that average for those five or six months and took 75% of that average. So the assumption was that there was a sub-probability that one of the card rooms might close, so we didn't want to take the full amount. But we also recognized that the last seven or eight, five or six months were probably the best information we had about what the future might be. So that $1,572 is 75% of that five or six-month average annualized.
And Paul, that same kind of approach to budgeting, the estimate, has been what we've worked with you on establishing since we established the Budget Committee, correct?
You know, for the most part, before, I think when CHIPS closed and when the New Phoenix-- we didn't know about the New Phoenix before. But we did try to take a conservative approach in terms of the revenue estimates because of its dependence on that one industry. And I think to some extent, and you've heard me say this before, but the approach that I like to have in a budget process is you want sort of a 25% chance that things will be worse than you expect and a 75% chance that things will be better. So you don't want to count on things that don't have some certainty to them.
Right.
Yet you still have to project and forecast your revenues, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So again, a dominant revenue source, and we can take this graph back a ways to a very strong revenue source for the city over the last decade or two. The next series of slides talk about the local card room industry changes. And I've got a little bit different set of information here for you than I did before. And I've got some estimates in terms of the impact that these different changes have on the card room industry. And these are my estimates, they're informed estimates, but they're not actuals. They're not necessarily based on disclosures from the card rooms. They're really estimates that I've come together. They're more to provide you with a framework of thinking about things. The numbers maybe, they're wrong, they're not actuals, right? They're just estimates of where some of these impacts might be in terms of the range. And so as I go through these, I'll show you where my-- I've come up with my estimates and the assumptions that I use in coming up with those estimates. So the first up is that the state minimum wage, Initiative 1433 back in November 2016, voters approved it, 60% statewide approval. And it had two major impacts. One, it was to increase the minimum wage from $9.47 at the time up to $13.50 in 2020. We're now in the second year, second increase. So the minimum wage in 2018 is $11.50, $2.03 higher than it was in 2016. And if you add the cost of Social Security and Medicare on that, another 7.65%. And if you assume half of the, oh, excuse me, the card rooms-- this is based on information that I did see from them-- but they have over 100 employees, even with the smaller operations, they're in the neighborhood of 300,000 hours of labor each, so large employers. So in addition to the revenue that they provide to you, they employ, they're your largest employer, over 100 employees, full-time employee, equivalent employees each. 300,000 hours, if you assumed that half of those hours were impacted by the minimum wage, you'd have a cost per card room of $328,000 a year. So that would be the frame of reference to estimate the impact of the minimum wage on these two businesses. The half of hours is based on sort of two things. One, they, many of their employees are at the minimum wage, but when the minimum wage increases, it also impacts the rest of their wage scale because they have to keep the differentials. You can't have a person who's been there two years being paid the same as a brand-new hire with no experience. And so what they'll argue, I think most economists and employers will argue, that the minimum wage impacts the new hire, that they would-- the minimum wage that they pay new hires, but it also impacts the rest of the employees in that same type of job capacity, supervisors as well, to keep that wage differential related to experience. Okay? So that's where I picked a half. You could argue that it's three-quarters, it could be less than half, could be a third. But if you use half, the cost impact on an annual basis is $328,000. And you can see that's just going to the $11.50. We're not talking about 2019 or 2020. The initiative approved by the voters has a 12.5% increase in 2020, so there's another $1.50 increase happening in that year on top of the 50 cent increase that'll happen in 2019. All, not to say that, you know, it's good or bad or different. This is just an impact on this industry that's a major revenue source and major employer in the community. So a couple of other things in terms of their cost structure. And again, these are my estimates, city estimates. Paid sick leave, the same Initiative 1433, also requires employers to provide one hour of paid time off for every 40 hours worked. So if you use that, 300,000 hours, take half of that and assume that half of their employees weren't receiving this benefit before, but will now, beginning in January 2018, and that wage for those employees is the minimum wage at $11.50, plus the cost of Social Security and Medicare would be roughly $46,000. So just another way of putting a cost estimate to the new paid sick time, paid time off requirement. Another requirement from the Affordable Care Act that actually took effect 2015, there were some waivers available in 2015, but really probably more fully in 2016, was the requirement that employers with more than 50 employees provide-- offer health insurance coverage to any employee that worked a minimum of 30 hours a week. And they had, in 2016, 2017, 130 or so each employees, full-time employees. Again, if you assume that half of the, excuse me, the impact of this Affordable Care Act works out to about $150,000 a year, it's my guess on the impact of that requirement, a little over $1,000 a year per FTE, if you would, for that. So not a significant marginal, a marginal increase in terms of the benefit being provided, but not necessarily the full cost of that benefit because there are, we're providing some benefits to their employees before that as well. So if you total up the three items, the minimum wage increase, the paid sick leave, and this medical insurance, you're in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars per card room in terms of the cost impact, my estimates, of the cost impact on each of these card rooms and their cost structures. Okay? Any questions on that before I move on?
Was the--
Were the card rooms not willing to give you this information?
It's proprietary, right? It's confidential. And because they're competitors, I don't want to necessarily say that it's sourced from their information, so didn't want to have that information available.
Because one operation seems to be, at first sight, seems to be larger than the other operation.
So it's just a way, just I wanted to give you a frame of reference for thinking about how it might impact the cost for each of those employers. The 300,000 hours, though, is, that is comparable. That's data you can, that I was able to bring. Okay? Looking at the revenue side, and this, we looked at this a minute ago in another context, but the average monthly revenue, gross revenue for the card rooms from May to December of 2017 averaged $850,000, which was the same revenue that they had for those same months back in 2014. So just to orient you to this graph, the blue bar is the 2017 monthly revenue, and the red line's 2016, the green line's 2015, and the purple line's 2014. And you can see 2016 was a good year. So when some of these cost increases in terms of the Affordable Care Act came in, they were actually doing well in terms of revenue that year. The first part of 2017, and anecdotally, they attribute this to some of the hype being built up for the new casino, brought new people up high five from Portland, and they checked on the construction, but also came down to the card rooms. So some of the better months that the card rooms had had over the last couple of years in the first quarter, first four months of 2017. And then you can see the impact in May when the casino opened. And you can see the average between May and December. This is on a, on an average basis for their gross revenue. Stay within a fairly tight range, and you can see fairly comparable, especially September, October, November, December seeming to match exactly 2014 and 2015 in terms of those revenues. And again, those were two years before the minimum wage increase, before the Affordable Care Act, and before the new paid time off requirements. Okay? Just to hit on a couple of other factors, obviously, the casino opening. They also talked last fall about the fact that they're-- that has brought them more advantaged players. And my understanding is that means that they're more skilled or more hard to catch if they're doing things that more skilled players do. So it helped, it impacts their, again, their environment in terms of the win percentage. They've also had to increase their player promotions and premiums, so doing more comping, doing more promotions to bring and retain the players to their facilities. Loss of revenue for multiple card rooms to support administration. So before, they had one set of administration over two card rooms. Now that same administrative cost is being borne by one card room for each operator. Then they've also got vacant buildings to maintain, pay taxes on, pay utilities for, that aren't generating any revenue. And then during this timeframe also, the Woodland Card Room not only opened, but has changed hands. Our understanding is that the most recent sale of that business has brought in some new investors that are being more competitive. Their tax rate was lowered to 3% in 2017, and so there's those issues as well. What I don't have mentioned here is the win percentage can come and go. And if you've got two card rooms, there's a probability, it's a low probability that both will have bad months because one can typically offset the other. And so with just one card room, there's more frequent, likely to be more frequently the opportunity when one card room has a down month, there isn't another one that might have a good month to offset that. And then one point that the card room owners make is that they can't raise their prices when costs increase. Their revenue is dependent on the number of people that are coming through the door and that net win percentage, which is positive over time, but can vary from month to month, from week to week, and from day to day. Okay? So it gives you a little bit of a sense of their, the changes that they face, both from a competitive environment but also a cost environment. So I'm gonna pause there. Any questions? You guys know, probably know this much better than I do, having been in the community longer.
Paul, I can't recollect, my failing memory. The regulated card rooms are required to have certain levels of staffing by state law. And I'm presuming that's much different than what an Alani or other unregulated card room can do. Do we know those differentials?
I do not, but I can find out.
I think that would be helpful to get, help people understand the limitations that the local card rooms are up against versus other competitive factors in the environment. Because with, under state law, there are a lot higher level of regulatory requirements of them than there are straight-out card rooms like the casino.
That is correct, and that actually came up in a conversation I had today, that they have requirements, pretty strict requirements in terms of staffing. I'll try and bring that back to you.
Because I think that makes the picture even more clearer in terms of the administrative requirements they must have on-site and those higher costs to the card rooms because of that management level that they're paying to keep those experienced and trained employees onboard. You know, so there's, there's other factors that I think it would be helpful to share with the full council and the community at large.
Great. Okay. So the next series of slides will present the proposed changes to the gambling tax structure. And again, just a quick setup for this discussion. Your 2016 and 2017 general fund surplus combined was 1.2 million? Suzanne will probably have your year-end report, I don't know if at the end of January, but early February. Right now, we're looking at a total for the two years of 1.2 million. It's primarily due to the better-than-expected revenue from the local card rooms. I think I showed you before, the 2017 of roughly $460,000 ahead of budget. 2016 was roughly the same, so about $900,000 of this 1.2 million surplus could be pointed to the better-than-expected results from the card rooms. Industry's going through a transition. We've talked about the benefit of having two healthy card rooms continue to operate, really some synergy of the clustering, having a second card room operating, we think benefits both, but obviously benefits the attraction of players coming to the community as well. The local card room owners, again, as I mentioned before, requested a change in the gambling tax structure to help them respond to both the cost changes that they're experiencing, but also the change in their competitive environment. So with that, we had a series of, well, let me talk just briefly about other cities and what's happening in other communities that have this industry in their communities. Several cities recently reduced their local card room tax rate. Spokane Valley reduced theirs from 10% to 6% in 2015. Spokane went from 8% to 2% in 2016. Woodland, as we talked about, lowered their tax rate to 3%. It was 5%, went to 4, and then to 3. Moses Lake just approved this year a lowering of its gambling tax rate from 10% to 5% by 1% a year, so it'll be 9% in 2018, lowering to a full 5% in 2022. And the Spokane Valley, the Spokane, I think all four of these are, were prompted by owners of local card rooms coming to their city councils and requesting a lowering of the tax rate to help their businesses thrive. A combination of competitive environment changes as well as just community impact as well. Okay? I did find one community that had a sliding scale. It was just for one year, in 2013, 2014, but it's expired, and the long-view tax rate is 11 and a quarter percent right now. They don't have a very large card room industry there, but in my research, I wanted to pass along that I did find one that had a sliding scale, which is relative to the discussion we'll have in just a minute. On a broader scale, this is, there's roughly 45 to 50 card rooms, house bank card rooms operating in Washington State. This represents roughly 24, 25 cities and probably 40 of the largest 45 card rooms. I didn't do all the extra little ones. And you can see the tax rates listed from high to low, Seattle, Lakewood, Kirkland. Lakewood and Taquilla are probably the two that have the largest revenue-producing card rooms. And you can see that at the 11%, 10%. 10% being the most typical, but a number of cities below that, 8, all the way down to 2%, where I mentioned Spokane, Silverdale as well. So this gives you a sense of what some of the other communities are doing in terms of their taxes.
Paul, something that might be interesting to see is comparing those communities to which ones have tribal gaming within, I don't know, 10 miles?
Yeah. I started to try and do that, and it was--
I mean, it's world hunger.
Yeah. It's hard to identify the specific locations in those. But I know that in Spokane, there's a casino out by the airport there that's near Spokane Valley. The city of Spokane obviously responded competitively to try and retain the card rooms that they had. So we know it's a factor.
There's about 11 up there that have Indian gaming, just--
In their communities.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think it's, it's a factor, but it's also, I think, you know, to the extent that there's other factors in those communities, demographics, density, lots of other factors that drive it, so.
Sure. Yeah, proximity to a population and disposable income, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay? So just a little more context. So getting into the proposed changes to the gambling tax. There's gonna be two, three different ways that we're gonna, two different ways we're gonna address this. The first is changes to the ordinance. So your current code, 5.25, is your gambling tax code. We'll have a couple of, we'll be proposing a couple of changes to that tax code, or to that's code provision. But the main elements of the gambling tax change will be contained in agreements with each of the card room owners, not in your code. So we're gonna first just have in your code, it'll say for 2018, will be covered under these two agreements with the separate card room owners, okay? We are gonna provide a couple of minor changes, proposing a couple of changes to the code. One is to lower, and I'll get to those provisions in the tax structure in a minute, in those agreements. But the ordinance will propose a change in the late fee structure. So you can see the table at the right-hand side shows the current late fee structure. 5% for 1 to 10 days, 10%, 11 to 14 days, 10% through to 20 days, sorry, and then 15% at 21, and then 20% at 31. Proposal is to reduce that to 2.5% for the first 14, 5% for the second, 15, since it's through the first month, and then 10% over a month. Partly in response to when those, like the first time we've had late fees assessed in, I think, the some 20 years that the card rooms have been paying were the last-- in, I think there's some 20 years, uh, that the card rooms have been paying were the last several months. But the, uh, if you, if you look at what it is on a, on a daily basis, that two and a half, or excuse me, that 5% for the first 10 days, that's a half a percent per day. If you go to the first, it was fairly significant. The next tier, that 10% for 14 days would be 0.71% per day. So it's a fairly healthy late fee assessment in terms of the annual percentage rate over 200% for that, 10% for 15 days, um, so fairly high. And it's also, if you look at the, what the state charges for late sales tax payments, which is something that doesn't necessarily, uh, benefit from the same kind of security that the gambling tax, uh, revenues do. The state charges 9% for 30 days on, uh, the sales tax. It goes up to 19% from 30 to 60 days. So, uh, the thought would be to, uh, bring forward a, a lower late fee structure for the card rooms. And then add a provision that the first 14-day late payment in a calendar year would be waived. So you just already get one, one free, uh, 14-day late payment. I looked at the provisions in a number of the other communities that have multiple card rooms operating, and they pretty much run the gamut. Some, um, in, in context for this is the, the payments due 30 days after the end of the month that the revenue happened, so, um, January's revenue for the card rooms, that tax payment is due before the end of February. If you can follow that, so the activity and revenue, payments due the end of February. Uh, some jurisdictions have their tax payments due the 15th day of the month after, some have them 30 days, some give a 14-day grace period after the 30 days. And the, the late fees are typically lower, uh, in many of the communities than, than what your, uh, your current code includes. On the other hand, we're also proposing to make it clear that there's, the provision in state law, RCW 9461104, uh, allows, or provides for that tax, that the gambling taxes, uh, that aren't paid on time, collection of those can use, uh, the lien process for all property that's used in the generating of that revenue. So the facility, the equipment and others. So you're afforded the ability to, uh, lien personal and real property used in the gambling activity to collect past due taxes. That wasn't, uh, specifically referenced in your code. Your code does reference a number of other elements of the RCW 9.46, uh, but we wanted to make it crystal clear that that would be a provision that you could act on, uh, to collect late payments. Let me back up a little bit on the, the late fee. One of the considerations that we wanted to provide is that, um, cash flow is one of the things that we're, we're trying to provide healthy, in our environment for healthy card rooms. And, uh, if cash flow is a challenge for them in terms of making their payment on a monthly basis, uh, we thought reducing that late fee would be an opportunity for us to, to help them in terms of making, uh, making that cash flow, easing that cash flow and not increasing that, or having such a high penalty. The other issue from the city standpoint is from a, a working capital standpoint, I'm, sorry, getting a little bit mixed up here, but many of the other jurisdictions also have quarterly payments, not monthly. So you're getting your payments monthly from the card rooms, which helps with your cash flow. Cash flow generally isn't an issue for the city of the center because of the reserve levels that you have. So, you know, if you think of late fees, you, you assess them as a penalty to try and encourage on-time payment partly for your cash flow, uh, which isn't necessarily an issue for you here, uh, but also is, uh, uh, you know, is a penalty to, um, collect additional revenue to make up for the lack of having that cash available. And obviously the, the 5% or the two and a half percent, uh, more than does that. Okay? So those are the, the changes in the ordinance. And then there'd also be an agreement for 2018 taxes. And it would be a, a standalone agreement that would sunset at the end of 2018. Uh, and would, the tax rate would go back to 10%, uh, absent another agreement that you would approve, uh, before the end of the year. And what we're proposing is a sliding scale, and these are marginal rates, so think of your, uh, income tax return. So these are marginal tax brackets with rates that go up, uh, with the higher level of revenue, okay? So this, this isn't a flat rate that applies to revenue at a certain level, it's marginal. So that first bracket is 0 to 400,000 in a month, that would be taxed at 5%. The next range, the next 300,000 from 400 to 700,000 would be taxed at 7 and a half percent. The next 300,000 would be taxed at 10%. From a million to million three would be 12 and a half percent. And then anything over a million three would be 15%. And then on the right hand, I show you the frequency that each of those, revenues came in at each of those levels for the last eight months. And you can see, uh, last seven months. You can see two months was in the four to 700,000 range for a, for a card room. But the vast majority, 10 of the months came in at that 700 to a million dollar range, and two of the months came in over a million dollars, okay? So it gives you a sense of where that is. So that would be the tax structure that would be operating, um, starting with, uh, the tax payment that's due the end of January. So we're proposing this to take effect, uh, with the payment that's due the end of January and go through revenue through 2018, so the tax payment that would be due the end of January 2019 for revenue earned in December of 2018, okay? In addition, we're proposing extending the 5% tax bracket up to 800,000 for April, May and June of 2018. And that, those three months were picked for consideration for the impacts of the proposed roundabout construction that is scheduled to start, I think, in April of this year. And in addition, that's, the second quarter is when the full effect of the new, city's new utility taxes would take effect as well, okay? So an additional consideration, extending that 5% rate up through 800,000 for those three months.
So the 10% rate wouldn't kick in until you hit 800,000 versus 700,000?
Correct, that's exactly it.
I didn't know if that, they didn't match, I didn't know if that was a typo or if it was intentional.
It was intentional to, to go up to the 800. So that's the proposed tax structure for 2018. And you have to provide the same agreement available for any new card, any taxpayer in this industry. So if another card room were to open, another person were to come in and buy or open the card room, this agreement would be available to them, uh, as well. But the agreement also has another provision that would require an additional payment in the event of closure. So, uh, the way we structured this proposal is that if they were to close before June 30th, there would be an additional payment of $25,000 due. If they closed between July 1 and October 31st, the payment would be 15,000. And if they closed after November 1st, there would be no money due. Part of this is to incentivize what I think we're all hoping for is that the card rooms stay open and are healthy for a long period of time. What we were aware of as we were talking through this though, is that if their economics change, they're gonna close, right? And if you, uh, look at what's happened to their two card rooms that did close, uh, from a cash flow standpoint, if they're not making money, this isn't gonna keep them open if their other economics of their business change, right? But this is a, a compensation that would come to the city in the event that they, that event happened earlier rather than later. Again, in consideration for revising the tax structure, as we mentioned on the previous slide. Closure needs to be defined, and been having some discussions on this, and this is one area where the agreement may change a little bit between now and when you see it next, uh, Wednesday at your agreement, or excuse me, at your council meeting. The card rooms have to provide notice to the Washington Gambling Commission when they change their hours and when they close, uh, when they close chips and when they close, uh, the new Phoenix, they had to provide notice. So we are thinking that that might be the definition of closure that we use that would activate these penalty payments. The other question I think that's, that's somewhat open is, at what operating level would the city want to raise their hand and say, well, I'm not sure that's what I agreed to in terms of providing the tax relief that, uh, is included in the agreement? So is there a provision, if they were open one day a week, would you still, as a city, want to be providing them the same tax structure that's in the agreement? Or are you operating under the assumption that you have two healthy card rooms and you wanna keep those two healthy card rooms operating? So I think that's an open question, uh, and something that, uh, both from the definition of closure as well as that potential issue, uh, you may see that in the, uh, agreements that you see next week. And I guess I'd, uh, just say that, that any amount due under this payment structure would be treated as the ta, same as a tax, so you'd still have the same provisions in terms of collection, the ability to lien any real or personal property used in the gambling in order to collect those, uh, those closure fees. So I just wanna pause here just for a minute and get some feedback on both the, uh, rate structure as well as, uh, the closure provision, and then also this last topic that I mentioned. Is there a, a threshold with it, with which that you'd wanna sort of have the potential to either opt out of the agreement if you choose, if you chose, uh, or uh, to have the agreement go back to a 10% tax rate? Is there a, a threshold there? So anyway, so those three topics, the tax rate structure, uh, disclosure provision, and then any sort of opt-out provision in terms of their operating.
Do you know if the state still has requirements in terms of the hours of operation they must maintain?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge. I don't think there's any minimum hours.
Oh, okay.
I know several of the card rooms, uh, up in the Puget Sound are, some of them are only open on the weekends, so.
I thought when they first started, here, wait, but that's years ago. Um, there were certain, uh, parameters in which they, they were required to be open, um.
I will find out for sure, I'll confirm that, but, uh, based on the conversations that we've had.
I think what the state was struggling with at that transition point was, um, trying to get away from some of the, um, gambling illegal card rooms that they had problems with in pre, previous years, you know, uh, the different, um, establishments that they ended up just buckling down and closing.
If, is there a, I'm wondering if the 60-hour thing would end up, when you look at the benefits required for the employees, or there's a threshold on those, you know, over so many hours and they have to pay benefits. If a card room operator would turn this into a cash cow, cut the hours down so they could cut the employee benefits completely out, or take them out of, you know, or they don't have to provide anything, and then we've dropped them, their tax bracket way down, and now it just turns into a cash cow to be open three days a week.
I think it gets into an imbalance when the, normal card rooms, that would be the case. I think in the state regulated card rooms, the required management employee level is such that even if they were to cut back on the minimum level, it would become too top-heavy for them to keep operating, would be my guess.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to the extent that you're trying to regulate how they manage their business, I'm not sure we, you wanna sort of worry so much about that, but the, um, the issue is, is there a, uh, a level of employment or a level of revenue that you're expecting them to provide by entering into this agreement that if they went below, you would wanna raise your hand and say, I wanna reconsider the agreement? So I think closure is one thing. Closure would be, send them a letter, we're no longer operating, we've closed our operations, and that would trigger the, the payments. The other question is, if they were only open a certain amount of the time and not delivering, they could be open two days a week and delivering 80% of the revenue, you know, we don't know.
Could be.
But is there a certain level of operation in terms of revenue or employment surrogate by hours of operation, um, that you would wanna have them maintain in order to stay in this agreement?
I would be more comfortable than just the weekend hours, simply because, I mean, maybe a twisted way of looking at it, but those are the two largest parcels within the city limits that are in operation. And for us to keep carrying that, um, you know, the decreased tax benefits for an operation that is only operating on a weekend, for example, is that really get into best use of that property? Uh, you know, it's one of those tough calls in terms of, you know, when do we cut bait?
Right.
And how, you know, how, how far do we go with this?
Remembering that this is gonna expire at the end of 2018 anyway, so to some extent you'll, you'll have an opportunity to.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's a tough call, um, you know, initially looking at it. But, you know, if it ran for any long period of time, that would be my concern.
And, and not worrying, not having any is okay, right? I'm just wanting to make sure that if there's a, uh, a feeling that you wanna make sure that the revenue or the employment levels are sustained, and if they're not sustained, if you wanna have the opportunity, now is the time to build that into the agreement.
I guess.
But it doesn't mean that you, you need to have it.
Yeah, from a community perspective, I know they employ a number of local residents. And they are also the primary, um, business that brought the, um, the apartment developments and the upgrades to, um, the apartment complex that we have just off of Pacific that had been in sad state of affairs for a long time. So, you know, we've got the, the pluses and minuses of trying to balance those jobs for the local employees, and being kind of protective of that, as well as the business itself.
And the other businesses downtown.
Yeah.
Multipliers from those.
Exactly, so all of the benefits that come with that. So I wouldn't want to see us, um, continue any type of, um, tax structure that benefited them adversely compared, on a comparative basis, does that make sense?
I think so.
I know, it's kind of.
Where did that 60-hour thing come from?
Uh, the 60 hours was more, uh, your city attorney, we need a definition of closure. And I think we're gonna, we had to scratch that 60 hours and replace it with when they notify the gambling commission that they're closed.
That makes more sense.
So that, that would be, I think, a proposal that we would bring forward. But then, the, the reason that the less than 60 hours per week was in there was partly in response to that second issue that I just raised, which is there a minimum operation that you'd like to see them employ in order to stay in this agreement? And if there isn't, then we don't need to worry about it. If there is, we need to think about what that might look like.
Could we change that and crank that number up? From 60 to 80 or 100?
So, again, if, uh, it depends on what you think, uh, you wanna, want from this agreement, right? So if you, the 84 hours would be half of 24/7, right?
Mm-hmm.
84 hours is half.
I'm thinking Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, or half a Sunday, as, you know, some, a window is, maybe it's a good idea, but maybe the number needs to change.
So I'd be interested in hearing from anybody else in terms of whether, A, it's a good idea, uh, and you wanna pursue it.
I think if you felt more comfortable going with the notification of the state, that makes more sense than having an hour at all.
Yes, in terms of closures, I think that's what we'll do with that.
It seems clearer or cleaner.
Great.
20 hours a week are they open now?
24/7, 168.
I thought they didn't do that anymore.
No, they're 24/7, 365. They, uh, can't serve liquor with two, I think.
Right.
2 o'clock to 6, 2, 2 AM to 6 AM, they, that's the hours.
Maybe the other two casinos did that before they closed.
It could be.
I think they have to, don't they have to close for a minimum time to do, or not to do that money transfer?
Not anymore, no, that law, they changed the law so they're able to stay open, 24/7. One did close, I think it was Christmas Eve because of.
One did close, I think it was Christmas Eve because of weather, but that was the only reason it closed.
They couldn't, no staff couldn't get here, that was a couple of years ago.
No, that was just this past year. Yeah. So, but no, their hours of operation now are 24/7, 365 days a year, yeah.
I think one thing to just, to keep in mind is if we find ourselves requiring that they reopen a minimum number of hours, and they find that because of that, that they start losing money, then we just, we may force them to close the doors sooner.
And that's the argument, that's definitely the argument against doing it.
And then, and then where are we if they close?
Well, I think then it gets into us trying to manage their business more. If we just keep it with the state-regulated notification, then, you know, it's just a process that they already have to follow. And we're just adhering to that.
So I think to some extent, it's an industry that's competitive environment and cost structure is going to determine its fate. Whether they're able to survive or not. You're providing them some incentive because of the history, because of the size of that industry relative to your, both your budget and your local employment. So we think of it, so part of the way to look at this is the context of the state's tax benefits that it's provided. You know, it provides Boeing a certain level of tax credit, but Boeing has to maintain a certain number of employees in the state. You know, they'll do that kind of thing where we'll give you this, but you have to do this. In this instance, the provision that we have there is a penalty on closure, but we don't have any, you know, if you don't operate, if you don't employ 100 people a year, there is no reversal of this proposal, at least for 2018, it's not permanent either. So I just, again, the question is from a policy standpoint, do you want to recognize that the competitive environment here is unique in their ability to employ? And if you force them, you might make, force them to close, and that's the bad outcome you want to avoid? Or is there some, you know, surrogate like the Boeing level of employment that you want to include in any agreement? That gives you the opportunity to say, well, that's not what we thought you were going to do. We want to reconsider our, what we offered on the table. And I think, you know, A, it's a short-term agreement, so there's no, even if you didn't, you might regret it, but you'd renegade it for just a short period of time. And if that were to happen, you'd probably be talking to them again anyways. You know, if their competitive environment changed drastically, you know, it would be another conversation that you'd be having. So I don't know that you'd need an opt-out clause. And the opt-out would be to take the tax rate to 10%, which would be sort of more detrimental to their operation.
And in part, this is what we're really trying to, you know, work with right now. What is the new normal going to be for the card rooms going forward? And what, how is this going to work out over the next several months? And I think one of the goals here, at least in my mind, one of the goals here is to, once this is, the council decides on, makes a decision on this, I would like to see us come to a permanent solution before the end of the year. And that would be another component of this. I know this is going to sunset on December 31st, but ideally, it would be nice if we could make, come up with some kind of a schedule that will be more permanent.
And I would imagine we'd still be looking at, you know, the entire process as we have been within the budget committee.
Right, exactly.
And be able to then bring it back to the full council.
And so we'd be working through some of these issues throughout the next several months. It's pretty tough right now, I think, Paul, to, I mean, it's a hard one to define.
So I would propose that we change the less than 60 hours to when the state's notified of closure and not include any other provision in terms of minimums.
To me, that makes more sense.
That makes sense.
I feel like this is a big flow chart, and all of them keep coming down to, we're closed.
Right.
We're closed, the more restrictions we put on it. Taking that to the extreme, yeah, I think just notifying the state and.
So, one of the things that this, you know, just to give you a little bit of a frame of reference, the average monthly gross revenue, as I mentioned before, is roughly 850,000. If that were the case for all of 2018, 850,000 a month, the effective tax rate from that structure would be 6.8%. So that gives you a little bit of a reference of, it's 10% now, a flat rate. If they did the same as they did the last eight months for the next 12, the tax rate would be roughly 6.8%. They get a little bit more benefit from the reduction from April to June, takes it down to about 6.5%. So you're giving them a roughly 32% to 35%, a third relief in terms of a reduction in the tax. Tax payment relief in dollar terms would be roughly 27,500 a month, 360,000 for the full year. If you remember back, my guess on the labor cost increases was about 500,000 a year for them there. And then the tax rate would go back to 10% in 2019 unless a new agreement was in place, okay? So that's the revenue impact on the card rooms and the relief impact. The impact on your revenue, again, 2016, 17 surplus, 1.2 million. Your 2018 adopted budget has a planned deficit of $390,000 covered by those surpluses from the prior years. The gambling tax revenue that you have in your budget is a million 572. The revised revenue estimate under this proposal would be a million 329. The deficit increases to 200, by 243,000 to a total of 633,000. You've currently got reserves in your general and reserve fund, not including your capital program fund or the sewer funds, other funds. You've got $6.8 million in reserves. Your policy target is 1.25 times your annual expenses, which would be 4.6 million. So you've got $2.2 million in reserves over and above your policy target. And if the $633,000 were taken out of reserves, that would drop you to $6.2 million, which would be roughly 1.67 times your annual expenses and still exceed the policy target by a considerable amount. And the use of these reserves will not cause a reduction in services. So the proposal is, again, as the mayor mentioned, really gives you, we've talked about this for over a year now, but give you a little bit more time to understand where that new normal is with the casino opening and the impact on both their card room operations, but also your revenues, okay?
Paul, please explain something for me. On the previous slide, you had mentioned that the profit reduction in tax payment, 27.5 per month per card room, or 360 for a full year. And that would be for per card room, right? 360 per card room or 720.
Correct.
For two of them, and yet we had one point, the next slide, if you can go to it. When you had the net effect, 1.5, so we had 1.5 million in gambling tax revenue. And if we drop that by 720, but yet we've got 1.329 up there.
Right, remember the 1,572 is 75% of what we expected. So the difference is actually would have been a better-than-expected result in 2018, again, if they were to perform at that 850,000. So that billion 572 is based on 75% of roughly that 800,000. So you're benefiting from a conservative revenue estimate going into your budget by not having as large of an increase in the deficit from this proposed.
Okay, I see that now, thank you, yeah.
Okay? So other thoughts in terms of the proposal?
What do the card rooms see as the new normal as they move forward, considering there's going to be another increase in minimum wage? And then another, and then another?
I think, you know, and Americans speak to this as well, but just in our conversations, they know they've got to change their operating structure somewhat. I think they're responding to the competitive environment too, thinking about how they do their promotions, their marketing, bring people into the facilities. But I know that they're looking at their cost structure hard and are going to have to make some changes in order to sustain profitability in light of those cost increases. And this is one, the city tax structure is one way that will help them with that. But I think, for the most part, it'll be, you know, potentially fewer hours for employees trying to make the same within the requirements the state has.
I think part of this too, or maybe to answer John's question down there, is try to get some inertia back when these parking lots were full at night. And there's been a lot of sting with Allen A. I go out and look around on the weekends and see who's where. I see people that I've seen at the Palace, I see him up at Allen A now. People I talk to over here that are big spenders at the Palace. And that said, they would go to Allen A, and I ran into one the other night up there. I know his brother was there too someplace. So if we can give them a respite so they can regenerate some of the inertia to get back down here. And when we blow up that intersection out there, it's going to make a mess too. You know, that's just going to add one more, because there's no way into town.
It's going to be rough.
You know, it's going to be an uphill battle. And we don't know what the new normal is because it just keeps going like this. And we may find that, to Mayor's point, in 2019, that we start out with a slope and maybe we, if we were seeing a trend where it's coming back, maybe we have to do a ramp in the other way next year. One thing I'm glad to see is that we had a sliding scale, we didn't have that before. And if, and then we become more of a partner.
Other thoughts, feedback, if you're into the topics? Again, the action for council next week would be an ordinance and then two agreements, authorize the mayor to sign two agreements.
Yeah, Paul, I like the sliding scale. I think the effective tax drops to 6.8, what, with the three months?
Eight, 6.5 with the three months.
Yeah, we're ahead of what we were once talking about. I think that's, I think that's really good. On the penalty for late payments. Penalties are supposed to sting, penalties and fees are supposed to sting. And what benefit is there to the city by reducing the penalty, should there be late payments? Because we've even said in our conversation tonight that late payments are actually quite an anomaly, at least historically they have been. Why drop the penalty? How's that helping the city?
It's, I think, part of the same proposal that the lower tax structure. It's a benefit to the card rooms from a cash flow standpoint. So I think it's a consideration that the city doesn't get a whole lot of benefit from the late payment in terms of monetarily wise, you know, in terms of its impact on its overall budget. And it provides a cash flow relief to a card room that by definition, by paying late, is said that they've got cash flow issues. So it's a way of reducing that cash flow issue for the partner card rooms at a time when they're by definition having cash flow issues.
But you think that, that gives them, if they're having a bad month, does that give them an incentive to be late?
I don't know that it does in terms of, you know, again, even at 2.5%, it would be a quarter of a percent per day in terms of interest. So, you know, there are other places to go to borrow money that would be cheaper than coming to the city, I think. So from a, you know, a cash flow standpoint, and I don't know, I can't speak to the reasons why the late payments recently occurred. But I think it's in the context of an agreement that's intended to provide them with some relief during a transition period that's both, you know, cost structure-wise, competitive environment-wise, and the lowering of the late fees is another way to essentially give them a little, small benefit when by definition they are having cash flow.
Doug, I look at this as 5% per month, because it's 2.5% for the first two weeks, or it goes up to 5% up to 30 days. That's 60% annual interest. I'm getting a point and a half on a CD right now. So this is usury, in essence. There's no reason you'd want to dip into this unless there's no other way. I mean, you aren't going to make, you can't, they won't make money by not paying us. They'll lose money on that, because you can't, you can't come anywhere near that in a commercial market, holding on to that money for the extra time, you know, just the friction that is sitting there at that rate. And I'd love to get that rate on money.
And I think historically, when you go back to how all of the language was originally put in place, was long before you had to deal with this. And we were dealing with one somewhat shady card room owner to begin with. And so that language was structured based on the historical activities that the city council knew to have happened, to brought them knocking on the door. So I think you have to kind of refocus how we look at things now because we have George Tini as one of our owners, who has been constantly very community-oriented, very giving, very focused, and very business savvy. We've also had, you know, the, what we have to call the newcomers in town is Michael's Development, who purchased the other set of card rooms. And they are a much bigger conglomerate, and so they too bring a whole level of business savvy to how they manage the business. And, you know, so they aren't looking to be late to begin with. And, you know, revenue is key. And so I think, you know, we have to understand, they don't, I don't think they go into an agreement looking at what the percentages are going to be if, God forbid, we end up not being able to make our payroll. And I think that's what we're seeing now happening, is, you know, they have certain dates that they have to meet their payroll and certain dates that they're supposed to have their funds to us. And oftentimes, those will collide.
Not often.
Not often, but.
There's the labor cost increase.
You know, you have to understand, you know, what they're juggling and how they're going about getting in the situation to begin with, but also the factors that are playing into them. So just to kind of give you some long-term background on how the language first originated. And where we're looking today, I think, is much more of a wiser path in terms of structuring the overall penalty percentages. And how we look at regulated card rooms, should they continue to operate in town, whoever owns them. You know, if someone else should come in and buy those gambling licenses and take over those businesses, then that transition would be much clearer going into it, into the relationship with them as well. So I think, you know, a broader focus at looking at what we're doing now as the city council to, you know, how it originally began is helpful.
And you have the additional security of being able to lean property, so that gives you, and I'm not sure if that was in place when the.
No, it wasn't, I think that's a much wiser.
Additional security around, if you're not going to leave a building forever, you're going to have at least some recourse.
Yeah, if you didn't have that, then it would be recourse through bankruptcy and you would factor. I don't think, would gambling tax be at the front end or would it just be factored into the rest of the bucket with?
It would be a hefty factor either way. But I think with that lean on the front end, it makes it much more.
Signing may be an issue, but certainty is there.
Yeah, yeah, certainty is there. Do we, and do we put a penalty on the, on the lien?
No, I think you've got other fees you could get, there's attorney's fees and other things.
Okay.
So is that ability to place a lien on the property, in a worst-case situation, is that recorded?
It will be.
Recorded with the county? In other words, is anything stopping the card rooms from coming in, let's say, refinancing their property? And we would find ourselves in the second position?
So the property taxes have priority lien. And so what this does is it links the gambling tax to the same provision that the property taxes have. So you would be paid on any kind of transaction, you'd have to be paid. So if you filed your lien, you could foreclose on that lien, right? So your recourse is to foreclose. And then ideally, if there's a lender behind you, they would pay your taxes in order for them to be able to keep the property or to buy the property. So it's a fairly certain protection, it's like the county treasurer with your property taxes, foreclose on that lien. And I think during that process, if you had. And I think during that process, if you had to go that route, you'd be allowed your fees, I think your, your provision is such that you are allowed your costs to your questions.
I was looking at, you mentioned the timeliness, if there was any recourse for the timeliness for being late on the, late on a lien.
No, the, the timing is you've gotta go through the foreclosure process to get paid.
Yeah.
Uh, so that could be six months.
Mm-hmm.
So John, I don't know if you had any comments or questions or thoughts, wanna make sure we give you an opportunity here?
Um, no, not at this time.
And I did mention I had a conversation with council member Valenzuela, and, and in general, he was supportive of the framework and the concept, uh, going forward. Um, again, as he often does, recognizing that it's a unique, uh, unique situation in terms of the size of the industry and its impact on the, both the city budget and the local community, and, uh, recognizing that there's this transition period and the need to, to provide some relief until we know for, uh, how we're gonna work. And he also said strongly that having two card rooms open is really the ideal. We wanna try and make sure we have that synergy.
Well, I think, I think it's the thing that we just failed to, to points, so we don't take in consideration, uh, is, and I, I, I have to hold my hand up when I say "we," is, one, it's a unique business, you can't change the price on the menu. And two, the mandated cost increases that they, they're suffering starting the first of this year. I was hoping to see an uptick, that the inertia would swing back around the other way, the pendulum come the other way faster than it did. And then you throw this in there, and that's just more fodder, you know, forward. So I, I don't see that we have a whole lot of choice here. Uh, and holding where we're at, I think is a good point, uh, to start with. I mean, we may, we may have to take another dip, you know, if it doesn't work right, so...
How many of these changes are permanent and how many of them expire at the end of twenty eighteen?
So the changes to the ordinance would be permanent. So the, uh, lowering of the late fee and the linkage to the ability to lean.
Okay.
Uh, the tax structure and the closure fee, those would be temporary.
Okay.
The marginal tax rate.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Other comments or questions? So again, your, uh, the agreement will be drafted. It's unclear whether we'll make the Thursday distribution of packets for this week, but I know, um, your city attorney is working on this tomorrow to get this all drafted and closed. So, um, whether or not it makes it on the normal distribution, it'll be distributed as soon as it's ready, so...
Well, thank you for all of your research and help.
You're welcome, pleasure.
Yeah, it was interesting the other day, the conversation we had over there explaining things. I appreciate that time, yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, thank you, council. Paul, thank you very much, great presentation. Um, Paul has put in a lot of effort and he's doing a phenomenal job. It's, uh, it's really a pleasure to be able to work with Paul, he's a true professional. Um, so with that, we will adjourn our work session. Um, again, I wanna thank you, everybody. I had just mentioned prior to the meeting that, uh, right, as of right now, we will probably schedule...